Clerk Segrist, please call the role. Thank you. Michael?
You're welcome.
Trustee Anthony.
Present.
Trustee Foster. In attendance, trustee Graham Hudek.
Good evening.
Let the record reflect that Clerk Segrist is in attendance. Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
Trustee Snyderman.
I am present.
And Supervisor Williams.
Hello.
A call for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have two sets of minutes for approval, actually three sets here. Let's see, could we do that in a single motion?
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the minutes from the November 27 meeting, the two sets, and the minutes from the December 1 meeting and the minutes for the December 4 meeting.
Support.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now would be the time in our agenda for citizens' non-agenda item. If there's anybody here that would like to speak to anything that is not on the agenda, now would be the time. Is there any public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, a call for Treasurer Slavens, please.
Mr. Supervisor, I make a motion that we pay the bills.
Second.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We should once again pay the bills. Thank you, guys. At this point, we've got a special recognition that we would like to do. We have Walgreens corporate representatives here this evening who would like to say a couple of words, and gentlemen, if you would, please approach the podium, introduce yourselves and...
Good evening, Board. My name is Greg Lizette. I'm an Asset Protection Manager here in Michigan. With me, I have Brian Lindsay, an Asset Protection Manager in Ohio. Both of us work organized retail crime cases in both states. I've been in retail asset protection for 27 years, 14 years with Walgreens. Our company, Walgreens, strives to build strong public-private partnerships which aids in combating criminal activity within our stores, keeping our customers and our employees safe and reducing losses as well. It also helps with our overall business continuity plan that in a time of crisis, we're able to open our doors and serve the communities where we're located. Retaining and attracting a business to a community is important for sustained and continued growth. It's beneficial for your residents and for the businesses that build here. Providing a safe environment for your residents and keeping the criminal element out of the community are both vital pieces to that. Organized retail crime, the scope of the problem, it costs the retail industry about $30 billion with a B each year. Eighty-three percent of retailers reported an increase in organized retail crime activity over the last year. Thirty-seven percent of the losses in our stores are due to organized retail crime events, which far outpasses internal theft-related issues, vendor fraud, and administrative errors. Recently, our Walgreens location here in Canton, as well as throughout southeast Michigan, were victims of a major multimillion-dollar organized retail crime group. The case originated here in Canton, and through the vigilance, dedication, and hard work of the Canton Police Special Operations Group and the Detective Bureau, we were able to shut this crew down, which was causing significant losses within our stores as well as with other retailers. The case brought together multiple law enforcement agencies, five different impacted retailers, Walgreens, CVS, Rite Aid, Target, and Home Depot. There was a total of 26 from the private sector. All of these resources were handled flawlessly by Sergeant Andes and his team and the Detective Bureau through multiple meetings and incredible communication and collaboration. The group was responsible for hundreds of thousands of dollars in losses to our Walgreens stores alone. The case exemplifies what an incredible public and private partnership looks like. I've worked with many law enforcement agencies over the course of the last 27 years, and this by far is the most or the best department I have ever worked with. Bringing together this many resources and to execute flawlessly is a true testimony to the level of professionalism exhibited by the Canton Police Department. At this time, I'd like to present a plaque. On behalf of the Walgreens Company, I would like to present this plaque to the Canton Police Department Special Operations Group and Detective Bureau for your extraordinary dedication, commitment, and professionalism.
Josh, who do we have accepting this evening?
Myself, W. Grant, and Sir.
Josh, would you like to add anything to...
I know there's a lot of work for a lot of hours and months and weeks and behind...
Yeah, this was the culmination of an investigation that started through a simple retail fraud case that our Patrol Division forwarded it up to the Investigation Bureau, and I can't thank the Detective Bureau and the Sog Unit enough for their work. They never quit. They put countless hours into this, and this was not because of me, but because of them and their hard work. So I appreciate their efforts in bringing this to the resolution that they were able to.
Very much everybody for your contribution. The team from Walgreens, thank you very much for acknowledging and recognizing and sharing that with us this evening. We really do appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Yep, very good. Clerk Segrist, can we read this into or...
Mr. Supervisor, I make a motion that we read the presentation into the public record.
Second.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Very good. Thank you. Okay, now if Clerk Segrist could read the consent calendar as one motion.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the Board approve the consent calendar as written, item C1, the reappointment to the Merit Commission of... I apologize. I'm having a technological issue, and I apologize for that. Of...
Richard Keenan.
Richard Keenan. I have item C2, consider adoption of Canton Township's Water System Advisory Council. Item C3, consider the 2019 meeting dates for the Historic District Commission, or HDC. And finally, item C4, to set the public hearing for consideration of a local government approval for the Michigan Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs Liquor Control Commission, or MLCC, liquor license application of AKI III Incorporated for a Class C liquor license Sunday sales PM permit and an off-site premises SDM license located at 250 North Canton Center Road, Canton, Michigan 48187, here in Canton Township, Wayne County.
Support.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now moving into the general calendar, item G1, consider approval of a special land use for the Alrigg site.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the Board adopt the following resolution. Whereas the project sponsor, Mr. Brian Amon, has requested special use approval for a fast-food restaurant with drive-through window to be located on Ford Road between Sheldon and Canton Center Roads identified as EDP parcel number listed, and whereas the Planning Commission found the proposed special land use to be consistent with the development objectives of the township and recommended approval, and whereas the Board has reviewed the proposed special land use and determines the proposal to be consistent with the zoning ordinance regulations and development objectives subject to any conditions described in the analysis and recommendation form attached here to and are made a part here of, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan does hereby approve the request of the project sponsor, Mr. Brian Amon, to conduct the special land use for the proposed fast-food restaurant with drive-through windows subject to compliance with any conditions contained herein and all other regulations of the township.
Support.
Very good. As stated, we have Mr. Brian Amon in the audience with us, representative of the project. The existing building will be demolished and a new one will be constructed to meet prospective tenant needs. The applicant has provided a conceptual site plan, landscape plan, and architectural elevations for review as well as responses to special land use criteria outlined in Article 27 of the zoning ordinance. Such uses are permitted in the C2 zoning district by special land use only. A detailed site plan will be provided for review at a future date as part of the site plan application. And this was one of the new ventures that we discussed at the strategic planning session we had last weekend. This is the high-end juice. And Brian, you're here this evening. If the Board has any questions or comments, now would be the appropriate time. Ann Marie?
The Planning Commission, the one thing we talked about, Dawn, was concerned about the architecture, which they're still working on.
Yeah, thank you, Board member. We, trustee, we actually passed those concerns directly along the very next morning, and so you'll see that in the site plan submission, hopefully a response that... My first concern was that it was just a bad representation based on the format we were using, but just in case, if it's actually what we're presenting, then let's fix that too. So you should see that within the site plan. They've been forewarned, and I think you'll see improvements, so, yeah.
Another thing was the stacking of the traffic. There's a concern there, but also you had said you had planned for 10 cars to stack there, and if there was an adjustment needed, it would be looked at.
Yeah, and this being... It's interesting, because I think just two doors over is McDonald's. So I think when you think stacking, you think, oh, my gosh, you know, what have we experienced? This is a very healthy but tasty health food alternative that expects no more than 300 customers during a day. So we don't expect problems with traffic stacking. I think it would be to their amusement and appreciation if that ever occurred, but most of the traffic will come in off the main, the current driveway, and then we prepare for 10 spaces within the drive-through space. So we think we've accommodated that, but your lips to God's ears that the problem actually occur for the prospective client. The user I could not say in the Planning Commission meeting, I can say today, is Smoothie King, and they are a global company. They're actually in South Korea and New York and LA. This is what they intend to be their first Midwest location. And so they're excited about the Canton community, the diversity that it has, and its sense of healthiness, the location of the Lifetime Fitness and other localities, other businesses makes them think that this will be a great location for them. And so we're excited to greet them. This will, I think, also result in the replacement of one of the older buildings along Ford Road, so it helps achieve the objectives of the master plan to help modernize what we've seen along Ford Road. And so with that, we're excited about it, and we appreciate your support for the project, so.
What were the concerns about the elevation, or it didn't show it?
It looked fairly gray and boring and not a lot of interest or features, and so...
Are they going to follow the requirements for brick?
Absolutely, but it was just the color in that, and I think it looked a little too Ohio State-ish for them, quite frankly, and so, which I agreed with, honestly, so, yeah, so.
Name of the restaurant?
Smoothie King. Yeah, they actually, and so their focus is healthy juice drinks that are creations of, you know, their own menu, and they serve packaged goods as well. They don't prepare any food in the site at all, so it's significantly lower impact than what a fast-food typically would be. There's no grease trap issues or anything like that or whatever. There's no cooking or baking or stuff like that, so, yeah.
No further questions? Those in favor of the motion? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, and if I just may take a second of personal privilege, I just, I learned tonight coming in that this is the last meeting Tim Foss will be presiding in this role.
Second from the last.
Second to the last. Oh, he seems to think he's done tonight, so you better talk to him. But I just want to say, it's been a privilege to work with him. He has been an incredible asset to this community, and he will be missed. And I look forward to whomever tries to fill those shoes, Tim, but thank you for your service. I, as an employee of the City of Detroit in public service, I appreciate the impact and the things that occur in public service. You've been a great public servant for this community, so we appreciate your service. So thank you. Thank you.
Tim, you're available next week. Correct, Tim?
Yeah, correction, last regular meeting.
There you go. I'm having a heart attack sitting right here right now. It's like, ah. Okay, thank you, Brian. All right, item G3, consider approval of list of major road projects for the 2019 Road Improvement Program.
Point of order, Mr. Supervisor, it should be item C2, I believe, Water System Advisory Council.
Thank you. Do appreciate. Item G2, consider authorization to prepare and distribute a proposed amendment to the comprehensive plan for the purpose of adding a road improvement transportation element, which will allow us to move into G3 next.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to adopt the formation of Canton's Water System Advisory Council, including two township staff members plus resident Alan. I'm at the wrong... Wow.
You're on, yeah. Oops. It's okay.
Ordered myself on that one. All right. Allow me one moment. Mr. Supervisor, I move to authorize Municipal Services Department staff to commence development of an amendment creating a transportation and road improvement element to the comprehensive plan and to distribute said element as required by Public Act 33 of 2008.
Support.
Are there any more comments or questions? Formality to get our paperwork set up? Go ahead.
Yeah, I think this is a good idea, I really do. So thank you.
Good. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G3, consider approval of the list of major road projects for the 2019 Road Improvement
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the major road project list for the 2019 construction year.
Support.
Rather than going through the summary and the background, this is the same list we've seen many times, but now we are formally acknowledging and accepting this as the 2019 plan. Are there any comments or questions?
Nothing changed from our study session?
You met with Warren Evans before that. What was the outcome of that?
The update that we have from today is the gentleman who's responsible for roads with Wayne County Municipal Services Division, I think, has moved on and is no longer with the county, so there may be some changing in the guard occurring there. I expressed my concerns about transparency between the county and the township, and I can tell you County Executive Evans is fully aligned with our desires and wishes and believes that should be delivered upon. So whether or not that had an impact on today's breaking news, I don't know, but stay tuned. Tim has asked that I do follow up on obtaining their five-year and 30-year plans. County's five-year, there's a breakout of multi-year plans, obtaining a copy of those for our community specifically. So when we have that in hand, we know we're moving in the right direction.
The other information that we didn't have as of the study session was the county did award its design contract for the Cherry Hill Road project, so that is something that's been lagging. But there, if you've seen, there's been survey crews working on Cherry Hill Road all week this week between Canton Center and Hagerty. So it looks like that project will be likely a late 2019 start and a completion in 2020. So that's moving forward, which is also some good news for us.
So I just wanted to, for those who might be watching at home or who aren't following this, just because I continue to get a lot of questions from a lot of individuals in the community, I forget that not everybody's involved in all the discussions or pays attention to every single meeting that we have, but this is obviously the list of all the 2019 projects. Many of them, in the beginning especially, are like routine maintenance and things like that. So when you see like asphalt crack ceiling, item number one, that project might be substantially less involved than the concrete panel replacements on item number 12. So it's just interesting, but important to note, to follow along with that, we'll be getting a list, obviously, for every single year, but those are also on the website, if I'm not mistaken? Is there a price estimate breakdown on the website or no?
There is our original estimate, not the revised estimate, and engineers will continue to refine that estimate right up until the time that we bid these projects in January. And then also, as of today, the local road improvement projects should be ready for the Board in January, so they'll be bid probably concurrently with these, but you'll see some different contractors for those projects.
And it's safe, and we had talked about, is it safe to assume that we will be doing a combination of major road improvement and with additionally with this kind of maintenance to keep them in good shape, like the crack ceiling on road repair that was done a couple of years ago?
Correct.
Keep the good roads good and then bring the bad roads to good, kind of philosophy? Thank you.
John, you have a question?
Well, just to understand, Tim, sometime in January, all the roads in Canton that need fixing, there'll be a list prioritizing those and setting them out. So if I live on 123 Main Street, I will know sometime in January when that road will be fixed and what will be hap, what the fix will be.
We hope to have that tentatively January 29th, so for Board review, and then I would expect Board adoption first week of February. But the designers will concurrently be getting those packages ready to bid, so, yeah, I think, you know, probably by the second week of February, for sure, we should have some pretty defined, exact locations where we'll be doing the work next year.
The, just a point of clarification, because I think John is asking a little bit different question. Okay, what Tim's referring to is what are we going to be doing in local roads in 2019? That's what you're going to be seeing in January. What John was asking a question was...
Yeah, I'm not.
...the entire inventory of all roads in Canton Township, all 480 lane miles with PESA ratings and a, you know, this is not, this section of road may be repaired in 2022, this one in 2027, this one in 2030. That's what John's asking.
All right, so our game plan for the future, the 2020 through 2022 plan, which will be the following three years of construction, that will probably be ready by about mid-year of 2019. Right now, we're still, frankly, we're still scrambling to put the 19 projects together. Just met this afternoon in Novi with our consultant to go over those local projects. So those will be available early in the year, the next three years worth of projects, 2020 to 2022, probably about mid-year.
Well, the question I get periodically at my office is, I live on a subdivision road that's the county road. When can I expect that road to be fixed? So is there going to be a list somewhere, sometime, of all the roads that are going to be fixed in Canton Township? What repairs are going to be made and when that road is going to be fixed?
The answer is, we're going to probably lay out three- to five-year programs. To try to lay out 20 years is virtually impossible, but we'll lay out the next three years, and then as soon as they kind of get that in motion, they could start working on a five-year program. So we're kind of doing one year, then three year, then a five year. But to go, you know, much beyond five years is pretty difficult to project, plus, as Pat mentioned, we have to coordinate with Wayne County on their improvements, not just the big capital projects they're going to do like Cherry Hill Road, but all their other maintenance projects, so.
Tim, is there, do you have a list of all the roads or streets in Canton that need to be fixed?
Every road in Canton Township, including the private roads, has been given a rating, and that's on the website. So you can go in there and you can see that that's, you know, my road in front of my house is a four, or it's an eight. But how we're going to treat that and when we're going to treat it, if it's an eight today, it's a certain type of fix. If it's a seven, three years from now, it's a little bit different type of fix. If it's a five, 10 years from now, it's yet a different type of fix. So a lot of work to coordinate all of that.
Would it be, and since there's a matching component for the local roads program, would it be safe to say that, to be honest, if they're interested in having that road fixed, they should probably show up to their homeowners association and have that discussion with the other people who live in their neighborhood?
Homeowners associations could start doing that. We hope to have a letter out sometime in January to the HOAs, to all of them, saying, here's a letter of interest that we want you to submit back to us and tell us the type of work you want to do, and would you be able to sign up for a under $50,000, $50,000 to $100,000 or $100,000 to $200,000 project in 2020?
Okay, but it's, so it's an active process, so that we aren't, so we're not going to the road in front of people's houses and fixing it without them coming to us first and asking for it?
Yeah, except for this first wave of projects coming for 2019 where there is no match.
Can I ask a question? So what if, what about the non-homeowner association neighborhoods? Are they going to receive a letter, or how's that going to work?
Yeah, well, that is going to be more of a challenge. We haven't figured out that communication exactly. Obviously, the focus is one tool we can use, but you don't have to be a homeowners association to actually apply for funding. If you could have, you know, eight other neighbors or nine other neighbors pool money together with you, you know, you could probably do a small project, you know, as a group of homeowners, but you would have to enter into a contract, as we discussed at the study session, with the township in order to kind of make that commitment, so.
Question based on what John said, so if you have a, you have the PESA ratings of all the roads, and HOA comes and says, we want to do Road A, and would you actually say, actually, Road B is in worse condition?
Right. We would have one meeting with the homeowners association at the beginning to kind of lay out what we think the strategy should be and basically try to work with them at that point.
We've kind of danced, not danced around, we've touched on but haven't gone very deep on the topic of subdivisions that don't have an HOA. My strongest advice to those individuals today that come to us is start getting organized, talk to your neighbors, because not being organized is going to hurt you in this process. And I can attest to, living on the east side of town, you know, 20-something years ago when we redid the parks in the subdivision I lived in, there was no HOA money, but we went door-to-door until we got enough money, and it took two years to get organized to make that happen. So folks have to get organized if they're not today, right? Or advise them or recommend them do that.
I just have a question on the PESA studies. I'm sure they're going to do another one in, what, five years or something? I mean, it's not set in stone now because it changes over years.
Correct. The plan is to do it every two years, so we did one in 18. We'll do another one in 2020.
No other questions? Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G4, consider approval of the 2018 budget adjustments.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the attached listing of budget adjustments to the 2018 budget.
All right, the township adopted the 20... I'm sorry. The township adopted the 2018 budget at the November 28, 2017 Board Meeting. Since then, there's been various changes and amendments made to it. At this time, I'm asking the Board of Trustees to approve the attached budget adjustments to the 2018 budget year. A description of the budget adjustments is explained in each of the attachments in your deck. Are there any board questions? This is our year-end cleanup.
This is mostly Greg's fault, right? As he said last week.
I think most of them are, yeah.
Okay, thought so.
No who to blame. Are there any other board questions or comments? None? Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G5, consider approval of renewal of Civic Plus website hosting services.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order in the amount not to exceed $18,095.63 payable to Civic Plus Incorporated for a renewal of hosting services, software support, and maintenance services provided by Civic Plus, covering a period of one year.
IT Services requesting permission to renew our hosting services and support agreements with Civic Plus, Inc., which expires January 22, 2019. IT Services recommending extending the current contract for a period of one year with Civic Plus to continue hosting, support, and access to Civic Plus custom-designed web content management systems. At this point, I'm making a request that all the directors, when reviewing future contracts with year-over-year increases, part of this contract was a 5% year-over-year. It's in the contract, we agreed to it, so therefore, if we want to accept it, we have to move forward, but to have year-over-year increases that far exceed CPI is irrational, and I don't think defendable, defensible. So it's an area that I'd like to try to push back in future agreement. So it's an area that I'd like to try to push back in future agreements. That's not even a question. It's a request for future consideration. Please.
This is the item that we were going to... We are thinking about renewing for three years to minimize the larger percentage increases, but we opted to do a year-over-year renewal because we were determining whether we wanted to continue with Civic Plus. So in this situation, we, a year ago, has decided to do annual increases instead of a three-year additional contract.
I design we're paying the slight premium in the incremental. Okay. And after... Well, go ahead, Stephen.
Is that because we're doing a redesign?
Well, the redo... We are in the process of a redesign. There was some concern, I think, voiced in a prior year, last year mainly, about some of the search content, and if we were able to find what we need to on the website. And I... At this point in time, I know the committee that was put together to... Who selected this company to host our website was very comfortable with this one compared to the other companies that we had used. We had one more free design out of this one, so I think the committee as a whole was really hoping to continue with Civic Plus, at least through the six-year period, and then look into potentially going back out to bid and looking at different website vendors at that point in time. But for right now, just because we were looking to see what other options were there and getting... Talking with the committee, we had a year ago decided to forego signing a three-year contract and do a year-over-year.
Further questions? Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item G6, consider approval of purchase of one GMC vehicle and associated 2018 police budget amendment. So we must have a couple of motions here.
Sir, Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of one 2019 GMC Sierra 1500 for the state bid price of $30,702 from Todd Wenzel Buick GMC.
Support.
The police department is requesting purchase of one 2018 GMC Sierra to replace the 2002 Dodge Intrepid that was involved in a crash on Monday, December 3, 2018. Due to the extensive damage caused by the rear-end collision, Dodge is being recommended for replacement by Fleet Services. Fleet Services has located the 2019 GMC Sierra 1500 in stock at Todd Wenzel, as stated, state bid price of $30,702. An amendment to the 2018 police budget is also being requested to utilize fund balance for this purchase. Are there any board questions?
It looks like we had... I have a question.
Sure.
Mr. Supervisor. It looks like, so we had initially looked for a 2018 Terrain, and we ended up with a 2019 Sierra. I assume that we're comfortable with this choice?
Yeah, so the switch from a Terrain to a Sierra was... Sierra was twofold. This vehicle is used for undercover operations, and we already have several terrains in the fleet. So we, for obvious reasons, we try to mix up the fleet a little bit. And as you... We discussed tonight with these ORC investigations, there's a lot of evidence that's collected. The truck is going to be utilized for a transfer of some of that evidence and some other things that are done for undercover operations that I'd be happy to discuss with the board outside of a public meeting.
So what happened? Was anyone hurt in the accident?
No, the officer was not hurt. He was rear-ended by another vehicle during a police pursuit. We are not involved in the pursuit.
Police vehicle was rear-ended?
Our police vehicle was rear-ended by another police vehicle from another agency.
Greg's fault, too, right?
Greg was nowhere near any of the vehicles at the time.
Greg was being pursued.
Oops.
Anne Marie?
There's one more thing here I noticed. So one of the additional equipment, which is, costs money and it costs subscriptions, is an OnStar and GMC connected services capable, but we would have our own radios, so we wouldn't need that, right?
Yeah, that's a standard feature on all GM vehicles we buy, but we don't activate it. We leave it turned off. So we don't add to that subscription.
This one slated to be replaced pretty soon, anyway?
Dodge Intrepid was not. It was a vehicle that we were going to continue using because it was...
16 years old, so I don't think it had many days left in it to begin with, but, yeah. It's days were numbered one way or the other.
Great for undercover work.
Great for undercover work. But we are mixing up the game a little bit, which is nice. Okay, seeing no further questions. Those in favor of the first motion as presented, state aye.
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 Mr. Supervisor, I additionally move to approve a 2018 budget amendment to utilize police fund balance for this purchase.
Those in favor of the second motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G7, consider approval of the purchase of a 2019 one-year service agreement for the Motorola Dispatch Council.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the 2019 purchase of a Motorola Solutions one-year service agreement for radio and dispatch console equipment in the amount of $56,650, utilizing funds in the 2019 E911 budget.
In terms of background, in 2012, the Public Safety Department purchased its 800 megahertz dispatch radio in E911 console, consisting of a multitude of components. The functionality of this critical equipment deems it necessary to rely on 24/7 responsive coverage for service calls, repairs, and replacement of hardware to keep dispatch and call center operating at peak performance. The proposed service contract includes a one-year site support, software protection, and remote technical support for Motorola-provided E911 systems, including the MCC 7500 consoles, nice logging recorder, Entrado Viper 911. And the contracting also includes 24/7 infrastructure repair and replacement of hardware components allowing for seamless delivery of E911 and radio transmission services. Preventative maintenance is also included in this agreement. Are there any board questions for Director... The under Josh is Director Meyer or Wendy?
What would the service calls be if you didn't have a service agreement? I mean, how much do they charge per call?
Just all depends on the issue. One of those radio consoles alone could be in excess of a 20 or 15, $20,000 repair, depending on the part and what they have to put into it.
How often do they come out?
Quite regularly. We get... Because they service not only the radio equipment, but they also service the recording equipment, so all of our phone lines that are recorded, that equipment is also covered under this, and then our 911 system. So usually, probably with every 30 days, there's some sort of issue with one of those pieces of equipment that we have to get looked at and repaired and corrected.
911 equipment, do we get any grants or anything to help pay for that?
No, there's no grants, but we can use the 911 funds. And those are the funds that come back from the surcharges on cell phones, et cetera. So we can use that because it's 911 equipment. So that's the funding that we're using, purchase that equipment.
Rub forfeiture at all?
I suppose we could, but this is, as I said, this is a perfect utilization for the 911 funds because those are limited to equipment in our dispatch center. We can't use that for things that we would be able to use forfeiture funds for. We can't buy police cars with it. We can only buy phone or radio equipment with the 911 funds. It has to be specific to dispatch. So this is a perfect utilization of the 911 funds itself.
We're very fortunate today in having a very strong 911 fund balance, so we're not reaching into general funds to cover these costs. Any additional board questions? Seeing none? Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. That, I believe, concludes our business this evening. Is there any additional public comment? Any additional public comment? Directors, any further comments? Seeing none. Trustees?
Christmas, Santa tree lighting holiday, and there's a lot of good... There was a good room there, too, which was great because it had all the different faiths there, and you could learn about how they celebrated different holidays, so that was nice, too. And we do have the coffee trustee this Saturday at 9:00 AM at Panera. Panera.
Which Panera?
Yes, it's true. The one on Ford Road.
So Panera, okay. Very good. All right. Anything additional? Seeing none, call for motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.